And they read the statement. This meeting is now, this meeting is now called to order. What will call Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, seven sixteen P. A. Trustee Williams. Trustee Williams.
Oh, she can't get in.
She's having a problem.
Okay, trustee Brooks. Just the Brooks, I see you.
Just the, uh, present.
Just the Jenkins Bale.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Bolden.
Present.
Trustee McMullin.
Present.
Mary Day.
Neither are you.
Here.
And if we.
Are you on?
If we could for the record.
Go ahead. Do, uh, yeah. Call neither, call neither.
Okay.
All right.
If we could for the record, those other officials in attendance, could they please announce themselves?
This is Joe Miller, attorney.
Attorney Steve Beck Fogle, village manager.
Village clerk D. Jones.
The treasurer's on, but he's on mute.
Yeah, he's muted himself.
Hey, okay, well Jim, I have to say something. Hey Jim, unmute. You gotta unmute yourself, Jim.
At the top of the screen up there.
I'm sorry, I was helping trustee Williams. What did you say? Hello? Hold on trustee, what did you say? Hello?
I said, could you unmute the treasurer?
No, I don't think she can.
Oh, she doesn't control it, okay.
Yeah. Mayor, you could go ahead and, if you want to go ahead and read the statement now.
All right, fantastic. Tuesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty, committee of the whole meeting pursuant to governor's executive order twenty twenty dash zero seven COVID nineteen executive order number five, which suspends the requirement of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, requiring in-person attendance by members of a public body during the duration of the gubernatorial disaster proclamation. The members of the village board will not be physically present for the designated board meeting, but will instead be participating in the meeting through audio access using a virtual meeting platform. Public comments may be submitted in advance of the meeting to the village clerk, Jones, at D. Jones, at university, I from R, L dot com, or by text message, one oh eight four seven three six two zero one. All comments must be received by five P. M. The day before the meeting. In order to give proper consideration to all items on this agenda, the mayor will limit participation and debate and will close off correct, repetitive, repetitive, ill-reverent, or abusive remarks. Public comments will be limited to a total of thirty minutes. Pleasure of allegiance to Madam Clerk.
There it is.
Ma- ma- mayor, can you?
Everyone wants to be muted unless we keep on talking.
Right.
But we're doing the pledge of allegiance now.
Yeah, some conversation.
Yeah, that's conversation going on. Sorry.
Who is it? It might be Liz.
That's who it is.
Our background needs to stop. Trustee Williams. Trustee Williams. Trustee Williams.
It's Liz.
Hey, hey, do you want to just go do our pledge of allegiance?
Okay. See the flag?
Yes.
Our pledge of allegiance.
By the United States of America. What you stand. One nation, under God, and the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, though, general public comments, any comments, Madam Clerk?
Mister Mayor, I did not receive any comment, any public comments by email, by phone, or by text.
Okay.
You know.
He's on your mute button.
They couldn't hear me, they were gonna unmute me, but I'm okay.
This is discussion item, item five, A one, a discussion in order to approve and authorize the X of a long-term lease agreement for the property commonly referred to as unit one hundred Townsend Drive, University Park, Illinois, six oh four eight four dash twenty eight hundred. Questions, open up the floor.
Point of.
Yes, Mayor, we have somebody here to do a presentation for that.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, if, if they can speak first, I, I, I tried Googling the name, I never heard of the name, so I just would like to.
I didn't either, I couldn't find it either.
Yeah, okay.
Good. Point of reference, can, can you give me the location of the, um, property? What unit is it? I notice one hundred.
The grocery store.
Oh, the grocery store, okay, fine.
Thank you.
And, and, and what you guys probably should have looked under was U. S. Minority Contractors, that's where you probably would find them.
Okay.
I understand you want to beat it off and then bring in the group out the waiting room?
Yes. Okay, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, the group, um, approached me and initially discussed the desire to be located in suburban Cook County.
Not Cook County, but.
Excuse me, suburban, I mean northern Will, northwestern Will County.
Right.
Northwestern Will County. And, um, their concern was to be able to deal with distributions in, um, in our location. So, in conversations with them, um, I knew that the place had major contractual, constructional issues internally. Mold, construction, and it wouldn't pass any kind of municipal inspection if we had our police and fire there. So, these guys are members of the U. S. Minority, um, Association, which is a minority contractors firm, they come from all over everywhere. So, uh, what, uh, I told them our problem, so what they did is said, and they'll explain it to you when we come in, that they would eternally, internally repair, uh, electrical, plumbing, floors, walls, ceilings, remediate molds based on a schedule that they would make a part and agreement with a basic maximum of two months. And then they would subsequent to the two months. And, uh, and it was approximate estimation on the cost, which far exceeded one hundred thousand dollars. Village didn't have the money, they agreed about the materials, contractors, get them permitted with the village, the whole nine yards. And that's what they had initially started to do. So, and then they said they'd like the first six months, uh, this is a four-year contract that they would like. And a four-year contract, eighteen hundred dollars. And then they went, reapproached the village again to renegotiate a subsequent agreement. But, um, and that's why I said, if this is real, I need to bring this to the board and see if we can move forward with it. They checked out, um, their licensing. And to, and that's why we're here, they're gonna do it. They're gonna do the external work as well, through the man.
Village manager, village manager, mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, trustee.
Okay, now, during this discussion, are we talking about the grounds to the parking lot, or was it just, uh, limited to one hundred?
Well, well, trustee, I, I would suggest, let's hear their presentation, if there's something that's not covered in their presentation, then we'll have a list of questions to ask them.
Yeah, because that parking lot is just, that parking lot is just no good for anyone.
I thought, I saw something in their agreement that says something as far as the exterior of the building, but let's hear them talking and we'll see what's going on.
That's fine.
Paperwork, their proposal.
Yes. So, do you want guys ready to bring them in?
We got their proposal.
It, it was in your agenda packet.
Yeah, let's.
Let's bring them on in.
Yeah, because, uh, they did say, um, I read it, and I, I, to me personally, I read the contract. Um, and I think that, uh, they're given some great options considering the, uh, condition of that store, just the other day, I was up there, and uh, this is an excellent contract for that.
Thank you, trustee, I do too.
Hey, bring them, bring them on in, let's hear them.
Yeah, yeah, let's hear them.
Eva, can you bring them in?
Mister Townsend. Mister Townsend.
Hello.
There he is.
Hello, board, hello, hello, board, how are you guys doing?
Great.
How are you?
I'm doing great, I'm doing great. And I have, I have, um, Shatunda's on the, um, on the line as well.
Could you announce yourself, sir?
My name is Sylvester Townsend, C. E. O. of Avlacia Beverage Enterprises Incorporated.
And Mister Tillman is on as well.
Yes. Well, he was, okay, I guess I, I'm, I'm here, how are you guys doing? I'm, I'm on, I'm on the lawn, he was here, but, oh, there he is, right there.
Yeah.
And Mister Sylvester, we want to try to limit this to ten minutes with.
Sure, um, Mayor, trustee clerk, on behalf of Mister Townsend, C. E. O., Mister Tillman, managing member, we would like the opportunity to. Your upper exterior wall facade and fix any electrical and plumbing issues up to the police and fire code standards. We want to remove the mold and abatement, we're gonna do the ceiling, the walls, the floor coverings, and repair them as needed. We want to do the plumbing and, um, electrical, and, uh, we're gonna, and this is, this is at no cost to the village. And so what we want to propose is, out of, out of the four-year lease, the first six months at six hundred dollars per month, thereafter fifteen hundred dollars per month, and we're gonna come and be very good, uh, community members, and we're gonna provide jobs to the community once we get in and get established. And then, once it passed inspection, uh, then we would like to, uh, begin the payment.
That sounds good, are you, this is trust, excuse me, mayor, can I be acknowledged?
Is he finished?
Oh, oh, are you finished? I'm sorry, are you finished?
And, and then we're gonna do some, um, exterior landscaping.
Okay.
Okay, when you talk about exterior landscaping, because that was one of the questions prior to you guys arriving to the, on the room, uh, go into a little depth on what interior landscaping you're speaking of.
Okay, so, exit, so, um, as soon as you approached the, the parking lot, on the outside facade, it's a, it's about a twenty-five foot hole in the exterior wall. We're gonna come in and, and repair and replace that, repair and patch that up and fix that.
Okay, now, I'm asking, are you interested in doing anything with that parking lot? Are we talking about the parking lot as well? Because we have many potholes and just the parking.
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, yes, we're gonna address it well.
Because I'm looking at right now, the metro station, they have completed the west side of the metro station in terms of the parking lot. It's been paved and it's been darkened, it's been paved over, and all of the holes are taken care of.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That we have at ninety. Okay, that's a, okay, that's.
And it's no cost to the village.
That's amazing. Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
And I'll be recognized. Okay, uh, I'm trying to get the name, I seen Sylvester, gentleman name, I was talking.
Tillman.
Mister Tillman.
Is that DeAndre Tillman?
Yes.
Detender Tillman.
Okay, okay, Mister Tillman, I, I just wanted to, a couple of question for the weeks. Uh, um, how many men will you be working on that? Would you have a full crew? I just wanted to know, like, uh, how fast, uh, cause, you know, for the, uh, uh, project to get to moving when you're saying.
Oh, absolutely, we, we have a crew, we have a crew, um, in the double digits, sir, and we're ready to, we're ready to go, um, if we can come to some agreement, we are absolutely ready to go.
I, I think I heard double digit, the internet kind of passed you out there, you said.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's a delay, yes, yes, sir, we have at least ten men on our staff.
May I be recognized?
Okay.
Trustee Bolden, go ahead.
Now, is, is this, are, are these general contractors, uh, laborers that you'll be using?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what type of jobs are you referring to that you will be bringing to the village?
So, we, um, we make deliveries throughout the, throughout, um, Illinois. And so we're gonna hire some members from the community, and we're gonna train them on our operation with the deliveries, customer service, et cetera, et cetera. Because we want to, we want to bring some, some vitality back to that, to that facility, and then we want the, the community to benefit by hiring some of its members.
And I understand you say you, you're going to be a distribution center, a distribution.
Yes, ma'am.
What's all going to be in that, in that location?
We, we just distribute, yes, ma'am, we just distribute water throughout Illinois and, and throughout the United States.
Is that alkaline water?
Yes, yes, ma'am, alkaline, alkaline water, and it's, it's a plethora of health benefits that comes with that.
It is, yes.
And so, um, and, and we just want to be, um, good, good community members.
Mayor, can I be recognized, trustee? Yes. And what jobs to the community, so we know?
Yes, okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna hire delivery drivers, we're gonna hire a clerk or secretary to work internally in the facility itself, to take orders and to run the office day to day, and then we're gonna hi- hire a lot of delivery drivers, and we're gonna train them.
So, at what point during this process, what point in terms of time to this?
Curtis is cutting out.
At what point are we gonna do?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, at what point, at what point?
Oh, absolutely.
At what point during this process?
Yes, I would say between the fourth and the seventh month, that'll give us enough, enough time to get in there, fix what's wrong, finish the parking lot, and then I would say, within, within, I'll say, between three to five months, we should be ready to start hiring the community.
Okay, that sounds good, and that parka, that parking lot is a big task, you're gonna do the whole parking lot?
No, I, look.
Hey, Curtis, ready to go at him, absolutely.
I like that, you know, you know what, listen, listen, uh, we always, um, we underpromise, but we overdeliver. So, let's just say that, once we get out there, we're gonna do our best to get the whole parking lot done.
Okay, then, thank you, that's what I need, thank you.
One more question, one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, now, the front of the building, the facade up there, you're going to fix that as well?
Absolutely, ma'am, that's our number one priority besides the mold remediation. Ma'am, we, ma'am, we want to come and pump life into that building.
And that's what it needs, we appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Trustee.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, I just want to follow through on trustee, uh, Bolden, because that was actually one of the things I have written down. Her and I always on the same page with these things, what, what kind of design, I mean, are you planning on allowing the windows to still be displayed, or are you going to display?
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna change.
Type of, uh, 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 display, or are you planning on taking those windows out?
No, no, we're definitely gonna let the windows stand, we're just, we might just tweak it a little bit to make it more, uh, you know, company friendly, to change it from looking like a, a store.
Right.
But, but there's value in the, in that, in those, in those windows, because it's natural light. But we'll, we'll, we'll configure it to where it looks very professional, and, and it'll, it'll look, it'll look very respectable.
Okay, um, also, um, I don't want to, I don't, I know trustee McMullin, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Franklin, you want to go first? I, I, you can go, you can go, may I use a trust, Frank?
All right, quick question, uh, can you confirm that this is a minority-owned business?
Yes, we are minority-owned certified through CMS, Minority Business Enterprise.
All right, awesome, uh, do you have any aspirations of, um, community involvement and partnering with organizations that's in the community?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, because we have the space and the square footage and the entire parking lot, there will be a lot of things that we're gonna do in conjunction with the to, to bring life and energy into the community. So, we want to partner with as many, uh, strategic partners and relationships that we can build, because all we want to do is better the community, so yes, sir.
Right.
Okay. Uh, Mayor, I just want to jump back, um, quick question, or, uh, is I fin, um, um, you're the back, I know, I, trust me, about the parking lot, like I said, I did a walk-around of the, and, and like I said, I had no clue this was coming or anything, this was just me walking through my community, uh, because, uh, you got two loading docks back there as well.
Yeah.
You know, so, I, I, I want you to, I, I, uh, I don't think you have any people or trustees objecting right now, we just kind of want you to be careful for the fact that we know that paving that lot is gonna be a lot, and I know, uh, you're gonna have a lot of, uh, fifty, uh, foot, fifty-two foot trailers coming in there, I'm assuming that's what you use. Um, so that back will probably be your priority of bringing those rigs in, uh, uh, behind there. But the next one I have is that, um, as far as the front, when you say you're gonna do the front, as far as landscaping, are you talking about more of where our veterans center, that's where you've seen the flags, or is it more back towards the store itself?
It would be at the store, and we will address that back, and we're gonna make sure that we do a good job, uh, with using quality asphalt, hoes that make it look really good, really professional, clean lines and painted lines out in the parking lot. We're gonna power wash that back, it's gonna look brand new when we done with it, and, uh, we're gonna take very good care of that property.
Okay, I think he, I think he cut out a little bit, but, so you did have an opportunity to walk in, I hate to say, but you did see the condition of what's inside and so forth, correct?
That's my question, yeah, that's, yeah.
We, yes, 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 sir. Absolutely, we, we are the gentleman, we, we got a little ski when we came to the window, little sign, all the diversity, but, uh, we want to turn this stuff to a viable for the community, it's high school sometime, and we want to make you guys proud, we want to get, get in there and do a good job, we're gonna renovate it, we're gonna make it presentable to the community, and then we're gonna get in that back, and we're gonna power wash it, we're gonna do any external landscaping that needs to be done, and once we get that parking lot done, we're gonna cover all of the potholes, it's gonna be really clean, clean last painted, it's gonna be really clean and pristine by the time we finish with it.
Okay, great, uh, my, 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 my next to last, I wanted to say, now, when I speak about, uh, I know you're a distribution center, uh, so the residents, because I can see it right now, uh, this question coming about, if you, the way you're gonna have it, is, is it gonna be that a resident can come in there and purchase your water the way it looks in the storefront, because I'm a.
Absolutely, absolutely. We, we, we are here, we serve your community, there is no other after community, so we will, we will, we will take care of that community as best we can, absolutely. So, DeAndre, that's what we, uh, as a distributor. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor. Are there any more, do you have any more locations, or is this gonna be your first adventure here?
Well, Mister Townsend, you want to speak to that?
And we have larger contracts that we need to fulfill, um, we definitely, we need, we need more space. And we outgrown our space, and, uh, a great distribution hub is what we need, because we're shipping from, um, we're shipping, we'll be shipping all over the United States, um, with the upcoming contract, um, that will start for us within the next six to eight months. So, that's pretty much it, so, right now, we have a small warehouse in Kankakee.
Okay, mayor, may I be recognized? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Ohio, Ohio, Mister Townsend, I wanted to know, how long has your business been in existence? How long have you been doing this? How many years?
Um, been doing this ten years.
And where, and another question, where will we, where can we purchase your product? Is it available in stores? Um, where is your product available?
Right, right now, it's, it's in the city of Chicago, we have, we have several locations in the city of Chicago, uh, that carries the brand. Then we also have, um, a location that carries the brand in New Jersey for the, for the time being. Uh, I have a distribution outlet in, um, in New Jersey, and so, but, uh, that is, there's one of our three leaders right there.
Right.
And we, you're able to, um.
This way, that way.
And that's, that's a three leader, that's a three leader that the mayor has, this is a one leader.
Okay.
Right here.
Oh, okay. That's nice.
And then.
You know, they gave us a sample, and I really enjoyed it, and I wanted to know where I could find.
Okay, you definitely, you definitely go on, um, you could definitely go on avlacia dot com, that's, uh, W. 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 dot A. V. L. A. V. L. A. C. I. E. R. dot com, and then you can also, if you are ever in the United South State.
Okay, I know where it is, okay.
Their whole, they, they, they sell it wholesale, or they all sell, they also sell it, um, at, um, food and paper, food and paper wholesale.
Oh, I've got it.
Seventy-third and South Chicago, yes, and then we, we're in, uh, Old Vetty area, we're in, um, quite a few Harold's Chickens throughout the city, uh, throughout the city.
On Alpha eighty-seven is one of our stores.
They have right up to Dan Ryan, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, Mister Townsend.
One more question, Mayor, and I'll be done.
That's all right, trustee, this is.
About approximately, how many employees did you have in mind that you would be hiring?
Okay, we, we, we will be hiring, so, uh, to, to touch on what Shatunda was saying, we, we have, we have district, so through the distribution process, packing and pulling orders, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna need, we're gonna need experienced people as well as the ones from the community, so, so we will probably have anywhere between ten and, uh, fifteen people to work for, for us at that location.
Okay.
Start.
And as we grow, as we grow, the more we grow, the. And as we grow, as we grow, the more we grow, the, the more community members we wanna hire.
You know, all the key words to say, don't you?
Yeah. He's from the heart, and I, I take no credit.
On, on the build-out, or, or the, uh, um, uh, the construct, do you have an estimate of how much you would be spending? Like, it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't break your, uh, it wouldn't break your bank, I guess that's the concern. We don't want you to-
Start it and then be, yeah.
No, 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 listen, listen. We, you have our word, you have our words that we, we are committed to this endeavor. It's gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars, but we are, we are prepared to invest that, because we're not just investing in ourselves, we're investing in your community. And we want to pump life into that building. We want to make that building so attractive, where you can see it pulling in the parking lot. You'll say, oh, the, the, the parking lot is so clean and crispy. That's a beautiful building, and we have a quality product. Um, alkaline water is very healthy for you. You can cook with it, you can, you can drink with it, your coffee, your tea, your hot chocolate. It's good, the water purifies your body, it, it makes you healthier. So, you know, we wanna be all around, uh, good stewards and good citizens in your community.
That's all Stone Pony drinks. Devante's, that's all he drinks with the alcohol.
There you go. That's true.
Only drinks it.
Stone Pony, Devante's Stone from the radio.
The radio personality.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Okay.
Little endorsement.
Well, 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 if, if, if we wanna just, uh, drop some names, you just, uh, go to the, uh, Instagram, vlashe Instagram, and we've been, uh, we've been around for a long time. I'm just gonna drop this on you. We've been around a long time. We've, we've dealt, we've, um, we, we support different, um, organizations.
Organizations.
From St. Jude's, from St. Jude's to, um, the Bo Jackson, the Chance Foundation's along that line. And we feed the home, we feed the homeless, we do a lot of charity acts that, uh, are not seen by, by the people. So, um, when you all asked earlier, what will we bring to the community? We're definitely gonna bring different, uh, we're gonna bring life to the community as well as, um, have, um, differently, different giveaways and things like that, so we can just make everyone, uh, look, uh, so we can just make everyone happy and look good, um, to me.
It's a win-win.
Absolutely. I'd just like to make a final comment.
Sounds like-
Um, go ahead, trustee. I think this is, uh, I think this is a great idea. Um, the, the idea of a black-owned alkaline water brand is, is something awesome in itself. Um, especially when, when we consider the fact that we're in the midst of a health crisis, and this, this pandemic has exposed so many, uh, health, health and equity in our communities. So to have an opportunity to have an alkaline water distribution center in the community is something that is, uh, there's a bigger picture, that a bigger message to that.
Thank you.
I think it'll be extremely important, it'll be extremely important that, um, you all are involved in, in the community and, and, and putting together projects and workshops to show the children in the community that these type of opportunities are available. And, um, so I'll be the, I, I'll definitely be on top of that. And, uh, thank you all for your presentation, and, and, uh, we appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, uh, make a note for the, uh, trustees, uh, or actually, uh, for those who, um, were listening, uh, in reference to what he was off, well, what, uh, Mr. Timothy was offering. If the trustees, uh, and by the way, Sylvester and Mr. Timothy, I'm the, I'm the nerdy one. I always gotta go read and look.
Yeah.
So, I just, I, yeah. I just would like the trustees to let you know that, uh, and for the residents, because they will be seeing this, uh, later tonight. Uh, but for the residents, that they, they, it is in the, it's on the Exhibit A, Page Seven. Uh, I don't know if my camera letting you see it, but they did, they did put it in there. Am I right, mayor? They put it in there. Uh, it is in there, uh, so that no one would ever, uh, before, and the reason why I'm saying this is because a lot of times residents feel that we do not include them. Uh, but I would like to say that this company in their contract, that, um, on the day between one and twenty-one, like he said, that it will be debris removal. They also said that they work on the, on it, uh, exterior walls. Uh, day twenty-two through thirty-four, they, uh, uh, explained that they will be doing the flow coverings, uh, and, and so on, is, is in the meetup to, uh, is expectation. I know someone is gonna mention the mold. They have in here that they are willing to remove the mold, uh, uh, in for the parking lot before anybody said, cuz I know it's gonna come out. Somebody always don't listen. Uh, they have it in here between day forty-five and sixty. They're doing the overhaul cleanup of the mold and debris, and they're gonna be repairing one hundred-plus spots, uh, in the, in the parking lot plus due to landscaping. So they put in their contract, they put it in the contract, it's in the contract, so they-
What do you mean, what do I want? I told you that McCray needs ready-to-go bottles for tomorrow.
Okay.
You already discussed this how many times?
Somebody in trouble. But anyway, um, might wanna hit you, somebody got in trouble. Uh, I, I did see it, mayor and trustees, I see, I see it. So I just wanted to, uh, say that I read it with my own eyes, and I do think that this is, uh, 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 something that would at least bring the, uh, village back to life. Because if you plant the seed, then I see, uh, it moving now. I, I said a thousand times, and I just want those who are for me to understand what I had always said. You wanna keep trying to put a grocery store in that spot. It's not going to work because of the numbers and the surveillance and the mayor. You, you, you've been there long enough to say, trustee Bowden, you've been around as a trustee. It's not going to happen that way. This is the best option that we have right now. Uh, and like I said, I read it. They gave a great presentation. Most of your food, uh, uh, eating stores that we build, if it is around here, it will probably be brand new. But we're talking about I-57 coming in through the corridor. Uh, so, uh, that was clearly explained. So if that question ever comes up, mayor, cuz you know, like I know, they're always gonna bring questions about what about a store? I think this is probably the best option right now. Uh, and as I yield my time, cuz I always run my mouth, uh, I think-
Just about to hit you at two forty-seven.
I think this is probably the best option, mayor, because, um, you know, I, I see this being on the agenda, and I, I vote yes for it when you do put it on there.
All right, fantastic. Um, Sylvester, thank you. DeAndre, thank you. Anybody else have questions from the board? We're gonna keep this moving, 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 moving forward. Madam Clerk, it is a recommendation, just do a straw poll, see if we move forward.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, just, oh, so this will be moved for, to the agenda for May twenty-sixth.
Fantastic.
And, uh, just so everybody's aware, I will be putting the public notice in the Daily South Town that the board will be considering this at a regular meeting. So everybody will be aware. This will either publish in this Thursday's paper or Sunday's paper.
Okay, and thank you, Madam Clerk. And, and before we leave out, I would just like to emphasize one thing, uh, Sylvester and DeAndre, that when construction phases start, please ensure us that workplace safety and social distancing and the proper protective gear will be suppo- supported and provided for the staff that's gonna be working there.
Please.
That there's a potential that they can even ensure that they're not walking in there with fevers and anything like that. So I just would like to have something in place to ensure the safety, uh, what, uh, what's going on inside the workplace.
Absolutely. We, we, we will handle that.
An extra precaution when they go in there, where I'm some, I know you're probably gonna get somebody that really knows how to get that mold and stuff out of there.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, they got, yeah.
Absolutely.
Lots of hand washing, lots of masks, lots of gloves. Bottom line, let's get to the doctor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Okay.
Okay, bye-bye.
All right, bye. Okay, next, uh, let's let the Ontario, let's let the Ontario group in. They're gonna be very short, and we'll let John Casparic and, uh, Mr. Hanley get in, and we'll be out of there. Uh, somebody at the Ontario group in.
Good evening, everyone. This is Curtis.
Um, thank you, Curtis. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, thank you, uh, thank you trustee, uh, or trustees and mayor. Thank you for the invitation to present tonight. Uh, I'll be brief. Um, uh, manager, uh, Missy asked me to join tonight to present on the status of the community vision plan. So I'm here to provide a quick update regarding the status of the community vision plan and let everyone know, uh, what our next steps are. Um, oh, I, I can control the slides. Oh, wait, nevermind, I can't control the slides. Okay, uh, next slide, please. Um, let's see, we have the next slide?
Two, it, two, slide two is up. Can you see it?
I also have the presentation up on my screen. Um,
Oh. Can you see the presentation?
I'll, I'll just keep rolling here, and, um, uh, Ms. Jenkins, if, if you're able to put the slides up, we can do the slides, but, um, I don't necessarily need them. So, um, ju- uh, just by way of quick introduction, I, I think at this, by this time, most people know, um, who Ontario group is, but I just wanna share that we've been working with the village, um, to do a number of projects, but one is the community vision plan. And we kicked this project off in November of last year, and we had a community meeting this past February. Oh, here we go. Can, can everyone see the slides now?
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Um, this is just a little overview, um, just so everyone knows who Ontario group is. We're a civil engineering firm and urban planning. We've been working with the village, uh, for several months now. And this community vision project, this community vision plan is, um, what we're working on right now with the village. Um, so, next slide. Okay, so I'll, I'll keep rolling here. Um, so in terms of where we're at in the process, we had a kickoff meeting in November, um, and we have mapped and summarized some of the existing conditions for, uh, the village's transportation network, um, parks and open space, housing, um, we're starting to collect more data on water infrastructure. So kind of the first step of creating any plan is to understand, you know, what are the baseline or existing conditions of it? Then, in February, we had a community workshop, and I, I know several of you on this call were there. So at that workshop, we broke into different groups focused on transportation, housing in neighborhoods, economic development, water and parks and open space. And we rotated through, and the, the goal of that workshop was to kind of have a back-and-forth discussion about what are, um, what are you excited about for the future in these different areas? And what are some of the concerns, and what are some of your priorities? Um, we took that information, took our baseline mapping in the, the- Can't hear nothing. Goals and plans. Priorities statement and work, but difference. Um, in terms of next steps and where we're heading, uh, at, at some point, we do need to close the community vision survey process, just so that there's a, there's a hard stop. You know, these are the survey responses that we've received to date. So that, at that point, we could analyze the results and see, you know, which priorities rank the highest. What were people's, uh, what were people very excited about, and what were, were residents concerned about? Um, so the proposed date for closing the survey would be perhaps end of this month. However, if the boards think that it would be better to extend the duration of the survey, you know, we can, uh, adjust timeline accordingly. Um, obviously, there's a lot of constraints with COVID-nineteen and the pandemic in the community, which we would like. Um, and unfortunately, the, this, this online survey is gonna- And unfortunately, this, this online survey is wanting to, uh, just a moment ago, that we got this draft vision statement and goals ready for review. So I think an appropriate next step would be it, or that document. And then, once, once we share those statements with the village for a public, I agree. Um, and then, after we have the survey responses collected and public feedback on the, the vision and goals and priorities, we can begin to package this into the whole community vision plan. Um, and just as a refresher, um, community vision vision plan is not intended to be a full-length comprehensive plan. That's a very expensive document that with a lot of good information and data about the community. Um, and this community vision plan is intended to kind of complement the capital improvement plan, um, which, uh, Ontario group is working on on behalf of the village as well. So um, ju- just to, let's see, uh, actually, if you could step back one slide, oh, yeah, thank you. So, once we share the draft community vision plans, and I'd give you a specific month, but unfortunately, it, you know, if we wanna keep the survey open a little longer, you know, it, it could be a lot of summer, we'd like to deliver a draft plan. And then we'd also like to, uh, get your feedback and get comments on that draft plan, respond to those comments, and then deliver the final plan later in the summer. And then with the ultimate goal of actually having a, a planning document, doc- document that is adopted by the village board. Okay, next slide? Uh, okay, so I'm gonna go and move in forward here. So if you are interested in learning more of the, the status of the project and accessing the community vision surveys and previous presentations, or a summary of the, the community vision, you could go to the village website, and I think there are a number of links, both on the homepage. Also, if you drill down to the website a little bit, you'll see links to the community vision process. So you can find information about this process there. Use process, so you can, uh, find information about any process there. Um, we're coordinating with Matt. Uh, I'll keep rolling here, so the-
Responses have you gotten from the online survey?
So from the online survey today, and I asked my colleague today, who's been compiling those, we have five, we only had surveys. However, we did print a number, or the village printed a number of surveys and distributed those Faith Movers Church. And I'm not exactly how many print surveys the village has, but just a few. So whatever we can, we'd like to get those surveys so that we can enter them in. And we'd also like to push the online survey a little more because there's not too many responses.
When did you start, when did you survey? When did you start?
I think the survey was put up online about two months ago. They make a push on all the village's websites, on all the village's social media channels, and also the website, if there's a newsletter, you know, I think the South Town was mentioned. Or if there's another newsletter or the cable station, I think all of that... But help get the word out that the survey is out there.
Curtis, let me, we printed over four distributions. We put them at the village hall. We did them doing, you know, provided in the...
I'll be right back.
We're still trying to do that, but it's, they're not always... Coming in. We put the exact information, so we just have a problem getting them back.
Yeah, mayor.
I would just like to, the moment you put something out and the moment you put it in a different location, it's very hard to get responses because we are, as a whole, are an apathetic community. So I would keep it open to the latter part of the summer. So we can get a chance for some sort of a response from the people, the residents, the community leaders. But I'm pretty sure it's going to be the same ones, really.
I agree, mayor. I just wanted to say, we got, we got a town of 8,000 people and I surveyed and two of them card only was in residence in the last census that were turned in, I think. I think it was about 8,000 people.
No, our last, our last, this was 7,200.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we can extend it, you know, Madam Village Manager, in greater hopes that, you know, that this will help our engineers in this process because we're trying. You know, you can't say we're not, if you don't help us. We need the community in order to help.
We'll keep knocking on their door.
It's gonna be the usual, it'll be usual subjects, subs, subjects that will answer the survey, just a handful of them. And you know who they are.
Anybody else have questions of Curtis?
Yeah, Curtis is the one. I couldn't get any presentation.
So the presentation could be shared to whomever. We can also put it on the, on the website as well. So...
But I would like one, just for my records.
Absolutely, village clerk. We will, I'll email that to you directly. But I'll also share that we're happy to share this and any other information that's needed as well. And with regards to the survey, I think there's, there could be an option where we keep the survey open, and we have done this in the past in other communities, and this is typical. And it is notoriously difficult to get good, a good response rate to the surveys, especially now when people are at home and they're stressed and there's other priorities in their lives. So this isn't, I don't think this is an abnormal situation. Well, it is with COVID-19, but the survey response rate isn't surprising to me. But what I think we can do is keep the survey open, you know, as long as we want, really, into the fall. But at...
Keep going, yeah.
But at some point this summer, we should kind of summarize it and pull the data that we have and then create the plan based off what the information we have at that point. So, but I'll defer to the village on how you want to proceed with that and if we have enough information to start to craft the plan. But, you know, this is an ongoing process. You know, even though we're creating a plan, it's more of like a snapshot of what are the priorities at that time? And how do we move forward? And of course, a community is never done. It's always improving. So just because we're creating this plan for that moment doesn't mean that things aren't constantly changing and dynamic. So that's just what I'll say about that. We can keep the survey open as long as we need to. But at some point this summer, we should close it, or sorry, summarize what we have and create a plan and then move forward.
I think, mayor, can I be recognized?
Yeah, right. Trustee McMullin.
I think we should exhaust all means to get the survey out, even with the cable station and the website itself. I think we should go all the way until the end of the summer to at least have some sort of input by the residents, if they so choose. I think we should keep it out as long as possible.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. I mean, let it go as long as we possibly can. Why not?
And they can always pick more up at the village hall, so.
All right. Well, I'm gonna say if no one else has any other questions. Trusted Jenkins, you got a question?
Yes, may I be recognized?
Yes.
My question to Mr. Curtis is, have we had the opportunity to take the survey and mail it to homes? So that the residents can, because they're shut in, they can't, really, they're not moving around a lot. And maybe a mailer will help increase, you know, the response and with the return, you know, postage stamp returning to them, or we can pick them up, or they can call the number, or we can put something. Because they're sitting at home, and if they're not picking them up, then we're dispersing them and they're not having a response. We need to come up with a better way to get the information out to every, every entire household.
That sounds good.
Trusty Bill. Trusty, and we created a postcard. The two-sided postcard, and it kind of has, it just has a nice image of the village. It's actually Pine Lake on the cover, and it'll probably have the mayor's image on it to give it some validity or some authority. So when people see a postcard with the mayor's image, you know, it has a little more weight. And so it has a link to the online survey. And we thought that that would be the most effective way to get responses, was to say, please take this survey. So with the village manager's permission, we could share that, well, we could share it with the village, and then it would be sent out through the village to the residents.
Okay. That sounds great.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, we're gonna let Curtis wrap up. We're gonna bring on the next group. Thank you, Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Hallie, please.
Good evening.
He's in. Okay.
Did you want something?
Bill?
It's on you. Good evening, all. What I wanted to discuss tonight is the financial audit for the fiscal year ended 2016 and the related internal control letter. And I think all of you received a copy of that this past week. And just a couple of highlights, you know. This is FY '16, you know, almost four years ago. And most of you were probably not even on the board at this, at this time. But before I go into the exact details of FY '16, working with Ms. E, the plan is to get caught up for the next four years. Hopefully, if all goes as planned by October, by October of 20, we'll have 16, 17, actually, five. Will be five audits, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20. And, you know, with, with John Kasperic's firm helping you out is outsourced accounting firm. That was a good step, very good step. We think we can accomplish this timetable. So the other item that was intended to delay this is just clarification about which expenses could be allocated to the various TIF projects. So we've made a concerted effort to allocate the appropriate expenses to the various TIF projects for these years. And as you know, the, the shortfalls in some of your operating expenses have been funded by loans from the various TIFs. So if really expenses that were paid by the general fund could be allocated to the TIFs, that will reduce the, the inter-fund loan that the general fund owes back to the TIFs. So it's a worthwhile project, and, you know, it's proper accounting, but it's also will reduce that amount that the general fund has to reimburse the TIFs. Mayor, do you have a question? Oh, no. Okay.
No, no, I'm good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So just a couple of specific comments about the FY '16 report. For that year, revenue was $23.5 million and expenses were $22 million. This is the first time in a few years, I mean, 14, 13, 14, 15, expenses always exceeded revenues. This specific year, FY '16, less TIF expenditures. And also, this was the year that garbage collection was not being provided to the residents by the village, so that expense went away. But also, this year, in the general fund, just the general fund, which is where the majority of the operations of the village are recorded, expenditures exceeded revenues by 1.5 million. And that's not good. That's not good. The other big change this year is that there's new accounting rules for recording pension liabilities for the fire and police fund. And that added this year a $16 million liability. You know, a lot of the villages, you know, they did this four years ago. And, you know, this is just, you know, getting caught up here. This is when you saw that, that big increase in your liabilities. And what that did, that created an overall village deficit of about $5 million. Okay? So... The other item is that unrestricted deficit, after you sit, you know, if you take your total fund balance and back out the TIF money, which is really spoken for, you back out your fixed assets, your roads and your golf course and those type of things that you really can't sell or have difficulty selling, the remaining fund balance is a deficit of $47 million, which is a, which is a very, very large hole that, you know, we've got to, we've got to work on over time correcting. And, you know, this, this problem didn't happen in one year. This, this is a series of years for probably the 10 years or 15 years prior to FY '16. There was deficit spending every year, you know, every year that the expense, every year the expenses were greater than the revenues. Okay? So that's how you got to this situation. And it's not going to be fixed, you know, in one fell swoop. It's gonna take a while to work our ways out. And, you know, everyone is, wants to, wants to work towards that. And I know you're tapping every revenue stream, and, you know, you've got the new Amazon coming on board. And just the last comment is that, again, as of this date, the general fund owed the TIFs $25 million. That's how much money the general fund has borrowed from the TIFs. And the TIF V project, your big project, is owed about $17 million. So... Those are the highlights. If there's any specific questions, I can, I'd be glad to discuss them with you.
Any questions, anybody? Trusty Brooks?
Okay, Bill, just very quickly, yes, you are right. And actually, I kind of got that brief. And actually, the mayor and I spoke about this about a month ago. And we were talking about the finances and making sure everything get on track. Because I think in 20, when that election of 2017, the mayor, in the streets that were there, they, the borrowing of one place, I guess, what... Times they have to borrow to, to, you know, make their general funds. We're on track with the revenue trying to come in, but with the spending, we're about a year away from, you know, being able to pay down that debt, beginning to pay down that debt. I'm sorry, beginning to pay down that debt.
Well, you know, I like speaking just a minute, but just a quick comment is, you know, I would hope so, but, you know, this whole COVID crisis, you really don't know what the, you know, there's gonna be a decline in revenues from the sales chain.
That's what...
Taxes, and it's just... Cloud card that we won't know, you know, for the next, till the next few months kind of pass, so.
Absolutely. And I was gonna quickly mention that in my report because I was on a 30-minute call talking to the state. So that's one thing that I'm gonna bring up.
Okay. Bill, what, I know we tried... Okay, Bill, what, I know we tried our best, like bringing in John. Would you say the way we've been trying to handle our finances since 2017, will it make your job easier that we can get the audits done as fast as you say? I just want to make sure that all the decisions that we've been making the past three years is putting us in a better position to move the village forward. So you know, you know, we can look at something financially and say, we know where we at, even if it's in a deficit. We know where we at and we're able to take, you know, like your firm and and, you know, get our audits done faster than than past.
And you know, and audit is history. It tells you what happened. What's really more important, and I think that's really what John and and Ms. E. are working towards, is getting you current information to help you with your budgeting process. And really, your budgeting process is the key. You know, what are we gonna do to have a budgeted? First of all, you got to get to break even. We're a balanced budget. And then we've got to start budgeting surpluses that provides money to pay these TIFs back. So that's that's a challenge that we've got to.
Gentlemen, along my ring there to my to my right, I feel is the best decision that this village has ever made. And and I just wanted him, you know, for the public to know we're on the right path. Mayor, you have my time.
Any other questions? Okay, I guess that was well explained. Go ahead. Okay. Thank you, Bill.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. And I understand, excuse me, before before John gets on, I just want to come in and thank you for all your time and efforts, even during this COVID-19. I'll be, it'll be to slip my mind, but you're doing a fantastic job. And I greatly appreciate all that you're doing. You make it such an easier process for me and everybody else, I'm quite sure. Thank you for doing what you're doing, but don't burn yourself out. Don't be so hard-headed. That's it. Go ahead, John.
Hey. Bill brought up a number of good points. First of all, I want to say that we've been having meetings on Friday, myself, Bill, Ernestine, Jacilia. We've been having conference calls, talking about statuses, trying to put together so that each week we see progress. City funds that should have been charged to the TIF. And I might just point out, when we looked at this, or when I looked at it, a lot of the TIF administrative costs, including the cost of setting up the TIFs, were never really charged to the TIFs. And of course, that goes way back before all of us here, I would assume. And there are a lot of expenses charged or that were not charged to the TIF. And I think, but the other some structure costs that were were incurred early on, but they were never properly recorded on the books. They ended up going in as inter-fund transfers or inter-fund loans. I won't say to the degree, I think Bill brought up very about. But all we have. But we have significant to go on future. You have to generate that. I know you've read, I've already been dealing with it for some other municipalities. And what we're gonna do with it, there really is no case law standing out there that says this is what has to happen. But you're not the only municipality that has inter-fund borrowed to the point that you cannot repay back the TIFs. Now the TIFs are coming due. I think TIF 5 comes due in 23, I think. I mean, I have this 23, 23 or 24. And at which point, whether it's extended or not, it doesn't really matter. You're not going to be able to generate $17 million in surplus to repay it. So at some point, that will just get written off the books. And but I'll save that conversation for Kathy or how she can explain if there will be any future litigation, if any at all. Because I know I've been dealing with this with other TIF attorneys as well as with Kathy or. And again, what do you do? You don't have the money. You surely can't borrow $17 million to repay that back. Of course, part of that would be repaid back to you. The bottom line is you you carry the numbers, you do the best you can. And Bill hit it right on the head. What we've been trying to do is go back, and it's not the easiest thing because the audit trails and people involved are not always there to be able to give us a little more history. But we're trying to make sure that expenses that should be charged to the TIFs are getting charged to the TIFs. We're doing it now with the audit. I believe 17 will be done for the end of the week or by the end of the week. And Bill should be able to wrap up.
John, you said 17?
Once we give him the adjustments, he'll be able to implement those and then they'll do their final reviews and send them again back to Ernestine and myself to review the the audited financial statements. And I want to point out that 18 is done on an accounting basis. We've already have all the books are ready to be audited for 18. The books are also ready to be audited for 19. And we have at the book of date now, March of 20. Now, one of the things I've been looking at is I've been working now more closely with my staff because I've been looking at the audited financial, not the audited, excuse me, the financial statements that come off your software. And I'm trying to come up with some software, when we do print these out for you off your software, they'll be more, how should I say, user-friendly. You have a number of budgeted accounts. And when you, you know, otherwise you'll be getting a 14, 15-page report. And some of the information on there, especially encumbrances, needs to be completely cleaned up. That's why I didn't, we haven't released them yet because really what we've been doing is really pushing, getting the, working with Bill and with, well, working with your staff and with Bill, knocking out 16. And we were doing 16, we were doing 17. That's why they're gonna come together so quickly. We've, we've spent more of our energies balancing the books through 18, 19, and 20. And in some of these past meetings with, that we've been having on these conference calls on Friday, we're now looking at some of the checking accounts to close that have balances that nobody, well, will probably know why in the end, but they could be closed, transferred to the general fund. We will be doing a much more thorough analysis on, when I say thorough, we'll again be doing the same analysis on the TIF expenditures because there was a lot of money spent on on prior professionals or that related to the TIF that were actually paid out of corporate fund. So we'll be able to trace those down. And I hope that we should be able to present to you some kind of financial statements in at the end of, or not at the end, but sometime in June. We want to present you with a set of financial statements. They're not audited. We call them interim financial statements at April 30. So you'll have the budget, the actual, the books will be tied out. We've already done the accrual adjustments for receivables and payables. While it's, it's a great tool to forward when you're looking at these upcoming budgets. So. Been busy. And there's a, I gotta say, have a lot of work done. So I think the audits, now that we can move forward, Ernestine's been a great, I gotta think he's rolling. And that helps. So we need things. And I know if I call, we call her or my staff calls, we get it. And that's helping because despite this, we have just information that we need. It's a little more comfortable. It's a lot easier. If we could look at the paid bills in your office, it'd be a lot quicker. But until we can, until everybody is determined when it's more safe for everybody to to get closer, so to speak, or at least work within the proximity of your building, we'll do the best we can. And I want to thank you also because we do have, our office has the ability to work within your system. So we are able to upload information in our accounting system to do the bank representations from a remote site.
That's awesome. Questions of John, anybody? Nobody has questions for John Kasperic?
Yeah, may I be recognized?
Go ahead, Trusty.
Yeah, I just wanna, well, first of all, let me, I want to give a comment to John. I want to thank you. Just like I I said to Bill, when you first came in, I, we knew you had a task on hand. And I appreciate everything you have done for this village. I would like the residents, for those who are watching, to educate them. When those who keep saying, we need a finance director, we need a finance director, if you didn't pay attention to the meeting, to the great presentation that John had gave, him in his office, that explains why we're not in the position we're in. We had seven people touching our money at one point when we had a finance director. Now we have John. Yeah, now we have John and we have Jacilia and we have the village manager. Ladies and gentlemen, that is, that is as simple as you can get. You have John who who has experience. And let me also say sometime, you know, Jacilia always get criticism, but Jacilia did not create this mess. Jacilia keeps an eye on everything. Mrs. E., she's the village manager. She authorized when it comes to handling the money and where's the spend, Jacilia communicates with Ms. E. So I don't think this can get any more simpler than that. So I want to thank you, John, because you're the answer to those who keep asking again and again to me, because I'm gonna run, well, if I do run. You know, why we don't have a finance director? Look, the system we have in place is what's moving this village forward. These two gentlemen have said what they need to do. They're worth every penny this village is giving us. Just the one question I'm giving, oh, I'm sorry, did we give them? Just one question, John. You mentioned the software. I know in 2017, that had came a question. Are we anywhere updated or do we need to update? If you can give any opinion. And if so, maybe Mrs. E., if we have to spend money this year to update software, let's do so. But I I do know back in 2017, when I first came on board, it was, I was told it was outdated.
Yes. Answer the question for, I guess your software is older than, let's say, the more modern versions that are out there. That would be, that would allow you to do a lot more with your software. But we are able, well, here's one, like one of our issues right now. Your books can only be two years old and at the same time. So right now, we only have 19, 20. We can't go back and change 18, 17, 16. So and as we, as we move forward, one of the things we are trying to do though is be as comprehensive with financial statements as far as inputting information as best as possible. So like when Bill's completing the 16 audit, we didn't put in as many of his journal entries as he gave us early on as well as 17. So the only new journal, he has to input those new journal entries on his side of the books to keep the books current from building 16 to 17. So year-end adjustments in 16, he's gonna have to put it in 17, 17 adjustments that he, the last ones he's gonna be doing are gonna have to go in 18. In 18, he's gonna have his whole plethora of journal entries because we didn't, he hasn't audited them yet, so we haven't put them in. To answer your question, I haven't really sat down with Jacilia to really say, hey, what can this system do, not do? I just know it's an old system. And therefore, when you deal with an old system, it's not as old as the state of Illinois. But we're, we're more advanced than that. But it may not be something, it may, it may be something worthwhile to look into. One of the things, in fact, I was, Jacilia and Ernestine and I were talking about just yesterday as far as setting up controls. Now that we're getting caught up on the accounting itself, now there can be a little bit more time looking at controls, starting to get that information to you, budgets, actual, get better planning, how much payroll can we report? What kind of revenues? Where's the revenues going? Are we collecting all of our revenues? But Ernestine and I talked about history because I think right now the village is on more of what we call an AP. Mike, more likely at home. And therefore, the bill's already done, the bills are already, you know, you're approving stuff after the fact. You're not approving it beforehand.
Okay.
In a purchase requising system, well, I did the week, I covered it on it yesterday. I know that Ernest, Jacilia were looking at your software today. And they did find out that you do have a purchase requising module in there. So if you have a policy or you're going to have to create a policy on how your purchasing is done, but you will then be able to put a lot more controls. In other words,
There you go.
Be able to buy things until they're approved.
There you go. There you go.
Payroll, health, insurance, utilities, yes, that's gonna be your normal stuff. But when you get into all the other ancillary things that the village buys, they should be going through the purchase rec system and you put together your controls. Who's gonna be the individual sign off? What's the dollar amount of department head with Ernestine, the mayor, and then what goes to the village before it can be approved for expenditures? And I think if you do that, that's gonna go a long way to control it. Because you have them just, any department head can buy whatever they want and then you just go. I don't want to make it sound like you're doing anything illegal, but at the same time, there's, they're buying it and you're paying for it. And if you want to pay for it, you really have no choice because you already bought it.
Okay.
So we're on that one now too.
Yeah, Mayor, I I yield my time. I just want to say, I did promise to do this. I think I told Ms. E. There was a meeting, Mayor, right before the crisis. I think we discussed bills, bills payable. And the way the bills were coming in stacked up and Jacilia tried to explain it. I just would like the public to know that 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 Wednesday, I walked into Village Hall. Jacilia had those bills that we had in question. She also explained how the invoice and so forth. So I kind of got a little education on it. So I would like to thank Mrs. E. as well because I went in and sat with her foremost about bills payable. And yes, like John said, you know, we're we're more up and back than we do, you know, like he explained, like we want, like we want to go because of the way the system is set up now. So Mayor, I yield my time. Thank you, John, for doing a great job. I appreciate you.
Hey, John, John, again, I don't know how to say thank you, but say thank you. Continue the good work. Any other questions from the board? If not, is there a motion?
So moved to adjourn, Mayor.
Moved by Trusty Brooks?
So you ought to.
Oh, Mayor, the manager had a report.
It's not on the agenda though.
Oh, okay, okay.
Agenda. We gotta just stick to every, you know, the black and white. I'm quite sure that port will grow by the time we have our next board meeting.
And it will be in place by then.
You're not taking action, so it's your choice if you want to hear it. It's your choice.
No, we'll wait till the next board meeting.
All right. So I'll make, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by Brooks. Trusty Bolden, all in favor?
Aye. Okay, he is frozen.
Opposed? Oppose none? That's it, Madam Kirk. Thank you, guys.
Take care.
I'll talk to you tomorrow, John.
All right, sounds like a plan.